The mayor's here, but he's running a little bit late, so we'll go ahead and get the city meeting going. It's four o'clock. Thank you. One A, roll call and possible action on excusing any absent members of the governing body?
Mayor Ambrosio Hernandez.
He's upstairs.
Commissioner Lasar Juarez.
Present.
Mayor Lieutenant Bobby Carrillo.
Here.
Commissioner Ramiro Caballero.
Present.
Commissioner Daniel Chavez.
Here.
Commissioner Ricardo Medina.
Present.
And Commissioner Iza Flores.
Present.
We have a call.
Thank you. Item one B, pledge allegiance and invocation by Luis.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, let's pray. Father, we come to you this hour asking for your blessing and help as we are gathered together. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Give us the desire to find ways to excel in our work. Amen.
Okay, let's go into proclamations. Two A, proclamation proclaiming April 5th through the 8th, 2021 as CDBG Week. Anybody from City could you hear? Go on up, guys.
Yes, I was assigned to do the proclamation for you. And it reads as such, whereas the City of FAR is a participant in the Community Development Block Grant CDBG program, which funds a myriad of social and public services, community projects, and housing programs. And whereas the city, in the communities throughout the nation, forty-seven years of community development block grant programs funding has developed a strong working network and relationships between the local government residents of community development target neighborhoods and a number of nonprofit agencies, which provide services and help make possible our commitment to those neighborhoods. And whereas during National Community Development Week, the City of FAR will give special thanks and recognition to all participants who hard work and devotion to the neighborhoods and their low and moderate income residents help ensure the quality and effectiveness of the Community Development Block Grant Program. Now therefore, I Ricardo Medina, in place of representing Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor of the City of FAR Texas, by the virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the Commission, do hereby proclaim the week of April 5th, 2021, and April to April 9th, 2021, as the National Community Development Week. In witness hereof, I have hereon set my hand and cause the seal of the City of FAR to be affixed on the fifth day of April, 2021. Congratulations.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Do either one of you want to make any comments about your department?
Okay, thank you, Mayor and City Commission. Just want to say thank you for the record. Santiago Salinas, CDBG manager. And just want to say, we're just, the city's privileged to have received funding as well from the CARES Act. Right now, today, we did kick off the Utility Assistance Program. And for the first day, it went real well. We had about a hundred and fifty, maybe plus, applications already. So we're very happy and proud to be a part of the CDBG. And we'll continue doing more community development projects, you know, that will meet the needs and demands of the citizens.
Great. Good. Now, you guys oversee housing also, right?
We do housing, yes. We oversee the housing and public services and demolition programs, so a myriad of activities.
Yeah, good. We'll keep the city abreast with, not only the social media, but make sure information gets sent out on what's going on, so they know where to apply and how to utilize the resources.
Definitely, Mayor.
We have them, we need to use them for our public.
Yes, definitely. We'll keep that.
Do you have any comments here? All right. Cindy?
Hello, Cindy Gartzare, Director of External Relations. I just want to go ahead and dovetail off of what Santiago said. The CDBG program here at the City of FAR is doing excellent, great things. It's a very tedious program that involves a lot of federal regulation. And so, the team has to be on top of everything that they're doing when it comes to any type of CDBG funding. The new COVID money that has come in, that we're now utilizing for the utility program and also the housing program, again, comes with, you know, a variety of guidelines that we have to follow through the federal program. And the team has been doing great. Like Santiago said, we had over a hundred and fifty FAR families come in today just for the utility program. So it's great. And we continue to move forward. We're already working on our action plan for next year as well. And we continue to work forward with our HUD representative as well. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Also, we'll go to, congratulations, guys. Two B, proclamation proclaiming April 4th through the 10th, 2021 as National Library Week, 2021. Go for it. Fancy.
Thank you. Brought it over the supervisory stack.
That's in case you go over the minute it shocks you.
Yes.
Proclamation. Whereas libraries of all types are the heart of the cities, towns, schools, and campuses serving their communities. And whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that foster a sense of belonging and community. And whereas today's libraries and their services extend far beyond the four walls of a building, and everyone is welcome to use their resources. Whereas for the people lacking broadband at home, libraries provide access to computers and Wi-Fi, even checking out internet hotspots and laptops. And whereas libraries offer opportunities for everyone to explore new worlds and become their best selves through the access of technology, multimedia content, and educational programs. And whereas in times of crisis, libraries, librarians, and library workers play an invaluable role in supporting their communities, both in person and virtually. And whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions for all members of the community, regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. And whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week and encourage all residents to visit their library to access resources and services. Now therefore, I Iza Flores, on behalf of Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor of City of FAR Texas, by virtue of the authority vested in me, and on behalf of the Mayor and the City Commission, do hereby proclaim the week of April 4th through 10th, 2021 as National Library Week. In witness hereof, I have unto you set my hand and cause the seal of the City of FAR to be affixed on this fifth day of April, 2021.
All right. Counselor.
Mayor, thank you, Commissioners, thank you very much. I just want, we do appreciate the recognition and also for allowing us to do the work that we do best is helping our community at the library. Thank you very much.
You know, you do, you do a lot more than that. You help with the census. You guys give us historical documents that we needed for like our wallpaper design. That was really impressive. And so, you guys do a lot more than what you allude to. And we're very happy with the staff. We get, you know, we, before the COVID, you know, we were getting a lot of compliments on your staff and how they were working with the public. And I'm sure it's going to continue now that things are opening back up. But you should be very proud of your staff, because you know, they are the heart and soul of your department. They do a wonderful job.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, all right. Do you have the, any employees want to say anything?
Yes.
Mayor, Commissioner, thank you for having us here today. As Ms. Commissioner Iza Flores mentioned in the proclamation, a lot of people use our library for our services, Wi-Fi, computers, especially during these hard times that a lot of people lost their jobs.
Yeah.
Or they don't have anywhere to get internet access from. We're here to help. So, thank you.
Good. Well, the Commission's about to solve that problem for you. Wait a little bit. But thank you for everything you guys do, and thank you for serving the population. They really need it.
Yes, they do. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Thank you, congratulations. Yes, sir, we're going to go a little bit out of order, Mayor, if you'll indulge me. Item two D, proclamation proclaiming April, 2021 as Fair Housing Month. Sure, who's here for that? Should have just grouped y'all together. Oh, yeah.
Okay, and again, Mayor, City Commission. Santiago Salinas, for the record, CDBG manager. And we have on behalf of the FAR Housing Authority, Mr. Mario Juarez, Chairman, and who will be making some comments on that.
Good. You didn't have to bring the big gun, man. We like you guys. You guys have a regular board.
Classmate.
Mayor and City Commission, I want to thank you on behalf of Mr. Noel De Leon, our Executive Director, and all the employees of the FAR Housing Authority for this, this honor. And also for the future of the citizens of FAR to, to provide adequate housing for, for all the citizens. Thank you.
Yeah. Mario, can you expand? I mean, you guys have done very well under Mr. De Leon, and of course, your board. Your board, you guys have a great makeup of the residents as well as the guys that get appointed. And you guys have seemed to have a very good engine going there. You, you were even asked to help out other FAR Housing Authorities and possibly even take them on. But I think that's because, and I know you guys don't want to talk about, but it's, it points out to the fact that your board and your administration under De Leon is doing very well, and it's being recognized for its leadership and great things that you're doing. So don't ever hesitate to share those thoughts, because the public needs to know that you guys are hard at work. You know, you're not just out having lunch, you actually do contribute to the organization, to the city. And you are an independent entity from the city. You guys run your own shop, vote, and do whatever you want, independent of the Commission. So you should be very proud of those accolades that you guys get. Yes, sir?
We are, and as a matter of fact, I wanted to share with everybody that it really hasn't come out yet, but we won during COVID, in spite of COVID, we still ended up getting two national awards that, that of course spearheaded by Mr. Noel De Leon and his staff that, that have done a great job and absolutely, we want to thank them and all the employees of the FAR Housing Authority.
That's right. When you get a chance, would you mind sharing that information with us? We would like to share with our, with our public as well, so they know the wonderful things you guys are doing at our CDBG and of course, FAR Housing Authority.
Sure will.
Okay? So whereas April is observed as a fair housing month across the country, and whereas the Fair Housing Act recognizes, supports, and encourages the right of every person, regardless of race, color, creed, gender, national origin, family status, or disability, to live in the housing of the individual's choice. And whereas fair housing organization and partners will observe the month of April with special activities and events in recognition of the Federal Fair Housing Act and the important role it plays in our community. And whereas in FAR Texas, we encourage all of our citizens to join in this national effort to assure housing opportunities for all Americans in all neighborhoods throughout the nation. Now therefore, I, Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor of the City of FAR Texas, by virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the entire City Commission, do hereby proclaim the month of April, 2021 as Fair Housing Month. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of FAR to be affixed on this fifth day of April, 2021. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mayor.
And one thing I forgot to announce, guys, the ones that got the proclamation, the two that faced the last one, then we'll bring you up one by one, get pictures with the Commission real quick. Don't leave. Going back to item C, Mayor, two C, proclamation proclaiming April 11th through the 17th, 2021 as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. All right. Come on up, guys. And gals. So, so like you said, so do we shut down 911 while y'all are here?
No emergencies right now.
I was going to say, man.
All excited to be here.
Would you mind introducing yourself in here?
Yes, definitely.
Guests?
Good afternoon, Commission, Mayor, City Manager. My name is Kenneth Innes, Intern Director of Public Safety Communications. Here we have our telecommunications officers in black.
Can you move the mics towards you?
I can't hear you that good. Oh, sorry about that.
Move the other one also towards you. There you go, sir.
Also have our telecommunications officers, telecommunications supervisors, medical director, of course Danny Ramírez, filling in for right now. So this is our staff.
Who's the gentleman behind you?
Our medical director.
Got it.
Barreto. Telecommunications officers miss the excitement of riding in a speeding car with lights flashing, sirens whaling, and they can only imagine flames and dense smoke coming from a burning building. Nor do they get to see the joy on the face of a worried parent as their child is revived from CPR. Telecommunications officers are different, just like snowflakes, no two are alike. However, they have one thing in common, they care about people and enjoy being the lifeline of our society. The steady voice in a storm that knows how to handle every emergency and does it with style and grace. It takes a very special and talented person who can do this job and do it well. And it is only fitting that we properly take the time to honor them for the job that they do, each one of them. It takes a person with a very unique skill to be a telecommunications officer, and I admire them and thank them for their hard work and dedication. They are truly heroes in a very special way, and I am very appreciative and proud to know these telecommunications officers and work with them and recognize them. We appreciate the City Commission, the City Manager, the Mayor, and the citizens of FAR who always continue to support the Communications Division and, and our Mission Division.
Great. I'm sure you're aware of this, you have the state-of-the-art telecommunications center. You, you're aware of it, right?
Correct.
There's no doubting that. That's what you guys have in FAR. And now we have exceptional staff, they go along with it. And I've bugged them a couple of times, I've called them when I see some crazy activity, and they've been nothing but polite, just so you know. And very professional. So we're, you're training them very well. It just, it just, it turns out that we're about to expand your job duties. So I'm glad you guys are here. So, you know, Dr. Barreto and I are in healthcare, so I'm going to go a little bit off. Before I read this, I'm going to educate you and give you a little information to get home with you. And the fire chief is fully aware. We've seen the importance of your role and the role that Danny plays, Dr. Barreto, the medical directors play in healthcare. We've seen also where it lacks, where our patients, our family members are either picked up, taken somewhere where they don't, they shouldn't be taken, because there's no coordination. That's the biggest problem we have, and not only in the county, but in the valley as a whole. You should be taken to a place where you know your grandma, your, your parents, your son, daughter, there's somebody, you guys look at a board, and you know that if you go to McCalla Medical Center, there is a doctor waiting for you, there's somebody on call. You guys have the knowledge in front of you, and you, no matter who's picking that patient up, they are directed by state authority, they got to take the patient there because it is in the best interest of the patient. Not a system, not an ambulance company, but the patient. And that would be the residents of FAR in this case. So having said that, we know that you guys are doing exceptional, you've been obviously recognized already, people are already speaking of what you, great things you're doing. Dr. Barreto and I, we work at different places. I, for one, I don't know if you know this, but I work for Driscoll Children's out of Corpus, under Surgical Director here. We have our own transporter company for a reason. We want to control the quality, and we're a nonprofit, right? But we also know that, like, Ramiro, he works to, which, what systems do you work at, Ramiro?
Yeah, everything, McCalla Medical Center, Regional, Edinburgh Regional Medical Center, Mission, Mission, I mean, of course, Mission Hospital, and NAP Medical Center as well.
Yeah, so you have two surgeons and a clinician here that we work and we deal with you guys on a daily basis, calling, transporting, transferring, and we see the headaches that might occur. And we also know that there is wonderful companies in the market, but there's also errors being made. And we know for a fact that the best run EMS service line is under municipality, under a fire department lead. It's a national model, we know it works. And I just want you to know, because you're about to get busy, you know, we're, we contemplated on bidding on an ambulance, because we need that kind of service for the City of FAR. We want it to be exceptional, just like we're thinking in New York, Chicago, we want that here. We're not going to sell, sell for anything less, and you guys are going to be in the front line. You guys are going to be making those calls. And we're working on other endeavors that's going to give you that ability to look at a board, and for once, in the history of the valley, we'll be able to sell, send patients where they need to go, where you want them to go. And, and in my experience, what I've seen in dealing with the pediatric world, I, I've seen it in adults as well, when I was in Galveston. Galveston with its Texas Children, Driscoll Children's, NAP Medical Center, for instance, the nonprofits have even won better. You know, when, when they're able to use federal funds to fund these endeavors, it goes a long way. Because they're, they're not in it for profit. They're in it to be sure that everybody gets taken care of equally, no matter what gender, race you are, socioeconomic class, we don't care. And I know I have, I've seen it firsthand, when we get headaches and transferring patients. And that's why, when you see the item, I don't know if you, if you saw it today, but it's, it's on there, we bid it on such an endeavor. If we get it, great. If we don't, it's okay. But FAR is going to be at a place much better than it was as of, as of today, starting tomorrow. And it's, and if those facilities that Dr. Barreto and I both work at, I mean, they're free to use wherever they want, it's up to them. If they choose to call us, well, we'll respond. That's going to be you guys as well. The fire department and the fire chief, I know, have been eager and looking at this endeavor, because we know, I think Brownsville has it, Westlaco, and I know they want this for the employees as well. But we're doing it, just so you guys know, for our residents. We want to be sure they always get the best. That's why we did the communications center, it's, everything's planned. That's why we got you guys, and we knew that was the next step coming. And so, Ramiro, do you want any comments?
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of interesting that we're talking about coordination and transfer of, you know, critical patients. I mean, I just had a, a case, you know, and you guys would understand, where we had, we were transferring a NICU baby, or twins, actually, and ended up, three hospitals were contacted, and the hospital that was sending the, the personnel out was not the, the hospital that that received the babies. When you have a transport center that's outside of the valley who have no idea who the hospitals are, who the players are, you know, that becomes a, a major problem, delays of transfer of patients, where minutes could make difference in life or outcomes. And I know your medical director knows what I'm talking about. So one of the things that, you know, we've always discussed, you know, between, you know, the mayor and I, is, you know, how we can best utilize our, our expertise. You know, I, I used to do, for many years, the pediatric intensive care, I did the newborn intensive care, I worked extensively in emergency rooms. I even did transports in the early part of my career here in the valley.
That's right.
All the way from Laredo to Brownsville. So the idea of, of taking care of our citizens in the City of FAR, this is one of the most important things. And you got to realize that, you know, we worked with our police department, you know, we work with our dispatch center. And to create a system where we have control over our, our, our quality of, of product, or how we trained our, our, you know, our EMS services, it's really key. It's important to realize, you know, a lot of these EMS services, you know, they have a lot of turnover of, of, of employees. And what we want to do here in the City of FAR is maintain the best, maintain, you know, perfect training and, and continuing patient, you know, training care. And of course, we want to get the best of the best of the EMS services, just like we have with your services, and coordinate, you know, to take care of our patients. You got to realize, taking care of patients is not just adults. You know, you, from any day, any EMS guys might have to deliver a baby, which we had the other day, especially now with everything we're having to do with the Border Patrol. You know, we've had patients deliver underneath, underneath Onze Lewis, you know, bridge. We've had babies deliver on the fields, we had babies deliver on bridges. And so it's very, very important that, you know, what we provide is the state-of-the-art and the best. It could be a child in any day in the City of FAR that was in an accident, it could be an adult, could be a COVID patient, could be an elderly patient, it just needs to be moved to their, you know, to a nursing care facility. You know, on the day-to-day, you know, your services as an EMS department have to be top-notch and have to be coordinated well. And our, we also have, you know, contacts with SDC, we have contacts with the UTRGV Medical School, and, you know, through Ambrosio's contacts, you know, and, you know, surgical world and mine, the pediatric world, I think, you know, and our director, we have, you know, pretty much covered as far as education process. And at the end of the day, it's trying to provide a better service for our community. And, you know, and as we have seen, you know, over the past twenty years or so, EMS companies, you know, sometimes fail. And one of the things that I always stress to Ambrosio is the fact that we have to control, you know, the, you know, what, you know, our service that we provide. And once we control, we control the quality and we, you know, the training, education. And that way, it's, you know, best serve the citizens, you know, the City of FAR. So again, you know, that's my say. So I'm pretty, I'm pretty an advocate for something like this, and I'm, I'm pretty emotional about it, because, you know, a lot of this has to do with lives and quality of life in our citizens here in City of FAR.
Thank you, sir. And this is why I told you, you're about to get busier, right? Because the key is communication, communication, and that's you guys. You guys in the front line, you'll be, you'll be dictating where our patients can get the number-one best care, three in the morning on Christmas Eve, Easter holiday, it doesn't matter. You guys are going to be the ones making sure that our loved ones, including ourselves, right, get into an accident, what have you, you're going to send us to the best place with no politics involved. No, have nothing to do with economics. Whether you make it or don't make it, for a dollar or not, is irrelevant. You guys are doing it because you know, you look at your board and you find the best place, and you're taking care of everybody. So I'm so happy that I'm reading this, but I just wanted to give you guys a heads up as well. Okay? So whereas Public Safety Communication Act asks our unseen first responders, but these men and women continually serve our communities and help save lives every day. Whereas these professionals, which include 911 operators, dispatchers, and other communication specialists, answer calls for help and use their high-quality communication and decision-making skills to address the needs of the caller according to specific challenges raised by their emergencies. See, just what we said, Dr. Barreto and I, right? Whereas not only do they maintain the calm, professional, and disciplined demeanor that handling a 911 call requires, but these first responders also think and respond rapidly to crisis situations, and often lend a supportive voice to reassure frightened, upset, and confused callers. Whereas we have faced the unprecedented challenges of the novel coronavirus pandemic, public safety communications have remained unwavering in their dedication to provide essential service to the citizens of FAR and surrounding communities in need during these difficult and distressing times. Whereas Public Safety Communications and the City of FAR Public Safety Communications Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, and each telecommunicator has given compassion, understanding, and professionalism during these unprecedented and trying times. And whereas we encourage all citizens of FAR and the state of Texas to learn more about the vital role these professionals play in our everyday lives, and to extend their appreciation to public safety to telecommunicators. Their strength and expertise in times of crisis ensure citizens receive the help they need when they need it most. Now therefore, I, Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor of the City of FAR Texas, by virtue of the authority vested in me, and on behalf of the Mayor and this entire City Commission, do hereby proclaim the week of April 11th through the 17th, 2021 as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of FAR to be affixed on this fifth day of April, 2021. Congratulations. There you go. Congratulations. So y'all come back around here, so I can get a picture with you? Oh, sure. And then we'll call up the rest on after this. You guys want to come up here? You're right here, face that one. Yeah. Oh, no, thank you, sir. Library and the. Well, this is for housing. Thank you, sir.
Hold on, they got one more for these guys. Where's Mario?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, guys.
So we're going to go to order. We're going to go to executive session. Before I go, I just want to make sure people understand this because I had a question before I walked in. Remember, we, it's public knowledge already, we know we got over $30 million in aid from, when you combine with President Trump and President Biden did for the city of FAR. It's over 30 million and CARES money, and CARES 2.0, and specifically to combat COVID. And actually, the ambulance service line falls in it. So there will be no city of FAR taxpayer money used for it. And actually, you can use it to not only acquire, which was the plan since last year, but also maintain it. So, you know, things work in magical ways. And as it turns out, we're going to use that to move the, the process forward with the bid, purchasing and operating it using CARES money without even using a single penny from the taxpayer funds. So, first clarification, because I was asked outside a minute ago. With that, in accordance to section 551.071 to 551.087, 87 of the Texas Government Code, the FAR Board of Commissioners hereby gives notice that it is convening into executive session to discuss the items listed in the public portion of the meeting agenda, the time now being 4:34. All right, we're back, 4:56.
Thank you. Item number three, public testimony. Anybody sign up, Hilda? None.
Okay.
Public here. Anybody sign up, development service cases?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
None. City manager reports, yes, sir. Mayor Commissioners, I have two quick reports. One is Arbor Day Foundation named the city of FAR a 2023 Tree City USA. Is that you?
All right. Must be those red maple trees.
For the record, Senator Alonise, Parks and Rec Director. With me today, I have Isaac Escobedo, Assistant Director, and the Urban Ecologist, Lily Martinez. So we're glad to announce that the city of FAR has earned the Tree City USA designation for 2020. We began doing this in 2017, so this marks the fourth consecutive year.
Yeah.
That we've obtained this. And, and like everything we do, it's a, it's a total team effort. This was a little bit unusual year with the COVID stuff, but we were still able to, to manage to get this done. And with the help of our advisory boards, the Parks and Rec Board, as well as the Keep FAR Beautiful Board, our community and, and the staff, they were able to get this stuff turned in and squared away. And this is a designation that we want to keep doing every single year because it shows a commitment as a, as a community to remain proactive with tree care, tree planting, tree maintenance, and then ensuring a quality of life for the future generations here in FAR. So the person that's mostly responsible for turning in all the good stuff for us to, to get this award is our urban ecologist, Lily. And I'm going to have her say a few words for you guys.
All right.
Good afternoon. My name is Lily Martinez, the urban ecologist. And, um, yeah, so. So we have achieved this award for the fourth year in a row, just like Sancho said. And this couldn't have been done without our, you know, our community actually coming out and, you know, being able to give away, back in December, 100 trees. This all just encourages, you know, stewardship and like the future, building the future for, you know, our community. Also, the Arbor Day Foundation, you know, they helped a lot. They kept in contact with me, specifically Bill Green, a forester. And we were able to get this done and we were awarded our, with the Arbor Day Foundation, our Tree City USA status.
That's great. Wonderful. Yeah, we're seeing a lot more greenery, which is good.
Yeah.
And, you know, one of the tasks that I asked Seth here to do, make sure our parks always the greenest. The private sector cannot have something better than us. I mean, we're, we do it here 24/7, so we should always stand out. And I did make that comment for maple trees because he and I knows what I'm talking about. We want to add color, right? Not, not everything can be mesquite in the city of FAR, right? Make sure you guys, you know, use your artistic brain cells, okay? And make sure you, you bring that out into the city of FAR.
Right.
But congratulations.
Mayor, can I say something?
Yes, sir.
Hey, I want to congratulate you guys, but I also want to, a shout out to Dr. Fletcher. I'm sure he's looking down on us and is very happy you guys continue doing his work that he loves so much, his trees in the city of FAR. So, thank you.
Picture of the commissioners?
Yeah.
They've got the awards there.
Yeah, you got it. All right, yeah. Come up here, young lady.
All right, Mayor Commissioners, thank you. One more, one I have for you all. Bring up Chief Harvey. He's got a new product he wants to demonstrate on somebody.
Oh.
Who's the volunteer?
Not tonight, but maybe later. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Wally, for the time. Part of our policing strategy is to use technology to our advantage, especially if it's going to make us more efficient, effective, and, in this case, safer. A company called Bola Wrap came last week and demonstrated a, a new tool that we can use and strongly considering for officers to have out there in the field so they can use less than lethal force. That, that's a good thing and it makes everybody safer. So I want to show you this quick one-minute video to give you a better idea of what it is. I know it looks like, it looks like fun, doesn't it? But, but that's something that we're considering. I want to brief you and let you know the direction that we're going. Is there any questions or concerns that I can answer?
No, that's really exciting. Non-lethal force is always the best scenario.
Yes, sir.
Best tool. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief. Great job.
Chief. I just wanted to make a comment because I heard it on the news about two, three days ago. I told you that you came out in the news because they were talking about this technology and that the city of FAR had it. And that's, that's what they were saying in the news. So it's, it's a good thing that at least they said the city of FAR had it. So they were really excited about it.
Nobody else, I don't think, has it in the valley, so I think that's why.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Mayor Commission, if you'll allow me to go out of order a little bit, I want to go, go to item 7C. Consideration action, if any, an ordinance creating an emergency medical service department within the city of FAR. Yes, sir. Staff is recommending to create an EMS department, a standalone department within the city of FAR. The next ordinance will go ahead and set the terms and the responsibilities, but this one, we need, we need to create the department. Most of those recommend.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you. Also, I'd like to go to item 8A. Consideration action, if any, authorized city manager to advertise for competitive seal proposals and/or cooperative contracts such as Texas DIR tip by board for the citywide fiber optic network project.
Mm-hmm.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Sure. And this one will be announced in a week or two to the general public, all about it. I'd like to go to 10D. Consideration action, if any, on agreement with PFM Financial Advisors LLC out of Austin, Texas for financial advisor services in connection with the issuance of $41 million combined tax and revenue certificates of obligation. Yes, sir. We're ready to go ahead and move ahead with a second bridge span, a second twin bridge we need to build. We didn't get presidential permit for that, so we are in design right now. It's going to take us about 60 to 90 days to get the money, so we're looking at some time in the summertime. This, PFM, I know we have a current financial advisor. We're recommending to go with PFM over our current one. The rates he gave us and the flexibility and the usage of the bond money is, is what we needed.
Great. We approve. Second.
Any discussion? Remember, 2023.
Yes, sir. We are scheduled to go follow 2023 to open.
All right.
Please give me the money.
Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. One more I'd like to go to is 10E. Consideration action, if any, on a local agreement with military heavy water supply. Yes, sir. So sometimes the impossible happens. We have 17,000 acres in our ETJ that we did not have rights to water. The mayor negotiated an agreement with Military Highway in Calhado to get this agreement signed. We are going to share in the services, we're going to share in the debt, and we're also going to share in any profit out there. So it opens up 17,000 acres for us for water, for development. So staff is recommending a big approval.
Approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Mayor, when this gets, there's a correction on it?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I'm sorry. You're right, Commissioners. There is a, a, the draft I gave you was approved by their board. There was half of a section left off. The, there's going to be a sub-board created. It's a five-member sub-board, two members by them, two members by us, and one member at large agreed to by both parties. That's what's going to be in there.
Any further discussion? Okay, now, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. And excuse me, gentlemen and ladies, I have to go work.
All right. Thank you. We go back to regular agenda. Six, six, the consent agenda. All items are routine, non-controversial, and can be approved with one motion. Should you so choose?
Approve.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. 7A, ordinance is resolution. 7A, consideration action, if any, an ordinance, amending ordinance number 082-13, Appendix A zoning ordinance. Yes, sir. Third and final reading. This changes our multifamily zoning ordinance.
Approve. Second.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Unanimous, motion carries. Thank you. 7B, consideration action, if any, an ordinance, amending ordinance 02020-38, relating to a number of authorized civil service positions within the fire department and police department. Yes, sir. Third and final reading. This adds the last firefighter to the list.
Approve. Second.
The first and second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Unanimous, motion carries. Thank you. 7C, we took up earlier. 7D, consideration action, if any, an ordinance, amending ordinance 2017-13, Chapter 50, Article 3 of the Code of Ordinances, relating to ambulance service in the city of FAR, declaring that the city will be the sole primary provider of ambulance services within the city. Yes, sir. This adoption on first reading. We do have a time limitation due to the bid that the mayor mentioned earlier. I need the department, we did create the department, it sets out the terms, what we can do, and all, everything will follow up with SOPs after that.
Approve. Second.
The first and second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Unanimous, motion carries. Thank you. 78, consideration action, if any, on resolution, authorizes emergency hiring in Parks Recreation Department, Communication Department, and Emergency Medical Services Department. Yes, Mayor Commissioners, we are under hiring freeze right now because of the election. We have done it before. There are certain departments that need to get up and running that are vital to, to the city. One is the Parks Recreation Department. We got to get ready for summer programs, the, the, the population demand summer programs. We need to get up and running. Communication Department is short, one employee that, that quit. That's a vital service we need to employ. And of course, EMS department would just create, we need to hire.
Approve. Second.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Unanimous, motion carries. Thank you. 7E, consideration action, if any, on resolution, determine the public necessity to acquire certain real property, give a notice and official determination to acquire real property for public purposes, establish procedures for the acquisition of market value for the property to be acquired, direct to the city manager or doesn't need to communicate office to owners for purchase of property, appropriate funds and authorized condemnation procedures by city attorney contingent on available funding. Yes, Mayor Commissioners, we are in need of a road, South Sugar Road, to push out to Military Highway. The traffic there, you can't make a left turn. We need a road there with a light. And also, we are looking for property. We might be expanding our produce park subdivision to include another one. So we're looking for land.
Approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Unanimous, motion carries. And for the record, it was 10F.
107F.
7F. 7F. 8A, we already took up. 8B, consideration action, if any, on a many professional architect rotation list for architectural projects. Yes, sir. I'm recommending to add Gallegos Project Management, Gilbert Gallegos, an architect to the rotation list.
Approve.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Unanimous, motion carries. Thank you. 8C, consideration action, if any, and authorize the city manager to negotiate and enter into an agreement for architectural services for project advanced learning. Yes, Mayor Commissioners, we're working on a deal to get some higher education here in the city. I need to present renderings and preliminary plans to the organization in order to get the, to get the deal done. So I want to hire an architect for that.
Approve.
For second?
Second.
All, all those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. 8D, consideration action, if any, on acceptance of the citywide ditch excavation hauling services project and release of final, final balance with retainage in the amount of $237,625. Yes, Mayor Commissioners, we approved a similar item last meeting, which was the, the change order and the additional time and the money we did for additional work we asked for. This closes out the project with the retainage. That was recommended, approve.
Approve.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
One of those. Okay. Motion carries. 9A, consideration action if any, authorized city manager to purchase one current model John Deere 310 SL backhoe loader from Doggett Equipment out of San Juan, Texas in the amount of $104,785.40 utilizing buyboard contract number 597-19. Yes, Mayor Commissioner, this was, this is a budgeted item. It will be for parks to cut grass, slope mower. It was 170,000 and change. We did get a big discount, taking it down to 104,785.40. First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Motion carries. Thank you. 9B, consideration action if any, authorized city manager to award purchase of 10 2021, 22 city vehicles through Caldwell County Chevrolet out of Caldwell, Texas using buyboard contract number 601-19. Yes, these are budgeted items. There are seven PD units, two pickups for public works and one pickup, I'm sorry, one SUV for media. That was recommended approval.
Second.
First and second, any discussion?
I had one question. Ed, when are we going to be considering buying some electric cars?
Electric cars?
Yeah.
We haven't looked at it. We can look at it. We're going to install some electric stations around the city. That's the thing, there's no electric stations here.
I know, but supposedly it, in the long run, especially for those departments, not, not for the PD, but for some of the other departments.
Media, stuff like that, has small SUVs. We'll look into it, sir.
Because in the long run, supposedly it can save you a lot of money.
I'll get your proposal, see where we need to install some stations.
Yes, I will start looking into it.
Yes, sir. We'll do. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Motion carries. Thank you. 8C, correction, 9C, consideration action if any, authorized city manager to purchase one diamond boom mower, 30-inch reach, 50-inch deck and John Deere out of, from John Deere out of Westago, Texas, the amount of 186,641 and 31 cents. Correction, the item A was the backhoe for public works, my bad. This one is the slope mower for public, for Parks and Rec, 186,641 and 30 cents. That was recommended approval.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Motion carries. Thank you. Contracts and agreements. 10A, consideration action if any, on award of contract for catastrophic event debris removal services. Yes, Mayor Commissioners, this is a contract we do every couple of years. This is the emergency debris removal when we have hurricanes and in this case, probably the freeze we had this past year. We're recommending to award two. One is a primary, one is a secondary. TFR Enterprises is the primary and Series Environmental is the secondary. And we have a backup.
Second.
The first and second, any discussion?
Is this for something that's current or is it for the future?
Also, this will be for the future, for the oncoming, oncoming hurricanes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. 10B, consideration action if any, on award of contract for debris monitoring and recovery planning services. Yes, sir. This one I'm requesting to table it. We want to go ahead and change the motif here. We did go out for bids for it. The bids were kind of scattered around, so I want to bring it back to you and actually create a rotation list that we can use them when the prices arrive for different services. We get the best value. Most on the table.
Second.
Thank you. 10C, consideration, I'm sorry. Do you want to vote on it? Yeah, vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Motion carries. Thank you. 10C, consideration action if any, authorized city manager to extend a supply contract with Border Pacific Railroad Company out of Rio Grande City, Texas for the person delivery of stone aggregate. Yes, sir. This is the one-year extension on the same contract, same terms. Staff is recommending approval.
We'll approve. Second.
First, second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Motion carries. Thank you. 10D, we took up already, and 10E, we took up already. Motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's over at 5:16. Y'all have a great evening.